All right, we'll call the meeting to order, town of Wakefield Board of Appeals for October 27, 2021. Call to order and roll call, members. Chip Turbell.
Here.
Jim McBane.
Here.
Amy Wall.
Yes.
Joe Pride.
Yeah.
Greg McIntosh.
Here.
I'm Lucy.
Here.
Mickey Feely.
Here.
Excellent. Amy, if you would mind with the legal notice, please.
I thought there wasn't a legal notice tonight.
Oh, that's right. Oh, you are right. Just keeping you on your toes, Amy.
Yeah.
Okay, but I will keep this on the screen for now because there were two hearings that were continued for this evening, a lot more for November, so buckle up for that one. But for this evening, we've received a couple of letters for continuances of these hearings. So from Attorney Brian McGrail dated today, October 27th, regarding S G D Management Group LLC. At 97 to 99 Water Street, case numbers 21 dash 43 and 44, requesting that we continue the matter to our meeting on November 17, 2021. They have met with board member Jim McBane, and based on that meeting, we're making adjustments to the design for submittal to the board to be presented at that meeting. So. We don't entertain a motion to continue to November 17.
And move that we continue this to November 17.
Again.
Any discussion on the motion? Jim, do you want anything or just table it till that meeting?
Uh, no, they have been very cooperative and they've been doing basically a very step-by-step method at this point, so I concur with this delay at this point.
Okay. Do we think they're actually going to be ready? I mean, it's been continued like 15 times at this point, and the next month is already completely jammed to begin with.
Yeah, no, they they very much will be ready, basically. I can't imagine not being ready by next meeting.
Right, Brian?
I agree. Yeah, we're pretty much ready now, but we we we, you know, had to present to Jim yesterday, and we weren't able to submit anything. In advance, and plus my client is reaching out to at least one of the neighbors that to talk and let them know what's going on.
Okay. Fair enough. That seems prudent, given the changes that are taking place on the site. So, okay, any other discussion on the motion then? All right, all in favor of Chip? Amy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So that's unanimous. If anyone's here for that hearing, it'll be added to our very busy agenda on November 17. Next, a letter received from 34 Payon Boulevard, Nicole McShane, case 22-10, requesting that we continue this matter to November 17. While we're making progress to resolve our issues, we still have a few things to work out. We have contacted an attorney and also waiting on architectural drawings to submit to the board. Thank you for your patience and help with this matter.
And move that we continue this to 17.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of Chip?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, so those will be continued and heard on 11-17. Okay. Which brings us to our other matters for the evening. The first one on the list, I'm just going to go in order, 117 Water Street, Kipos Roast Beef, to discuss signage. So do we have something to review this evening? Anyone representing 117 Water?
Yes, I'm here. I'm sorry, I was fumbling with my. It's Bob Sardell. I was fumbling with my setting here. I don't know why I can't get my video on.
Wait a minute. Welcome, Bob. Thank you.
Hello there. I think I'm here now. Yep, here I am. All right. A little background, I'm standing in for John Connor's Signs and Repairs, who was the actual contractor for this particular job. He had a conflict with another's meeting that he had to be to in person, and he couldn't do a Zoom at the time, so I'm going to do my best I can with this here and. Tell you about it.
Do you have any of the plans electronically to share on your screen, Bob?
Um, okay, I. I thought that was something. This is the first time I had to share this. I'm doing it this way. I always thought the plans were already there. On my laptop here, but it's going to, I apologize, it'll take me a minute to to pull it up here. We'll actually put them on here. I'm I'm I've never done it this way before.
So at the bottom of your screen, you should have an option to share your screen.
Okay.
And when you click that, it should pop up a window with options, what to share, a certain application, or your entire screen.
Okay.
If you open the plans and is, I don't know if they're PDFs or pictures.
Sitting in an e- in an email right here, so you have to, I mean, I apologize, if you have to push me to a next over, I'll get this ready. Is that something you want to do?
We could, board members, would you prefer, I mean, I, let's see.
I mean, it's probably a few minutes to do this.
We could come back to you. We've got a couple others, I think, that we could cover.
All righty.
If that's okay with you, Bob, and just open whatever plans you have locally, and then you'll be able to share them when we come back to you.
Okay, very good.
All right.
I'll have it already then. Thank you.
So the next matter that was on the agenda was 29, 21-29 to 21-31, M Bar Wakefield LLC at 500 Main Street, Santardeir Bank, to discuss materials.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. May I?
Absolutely.
Thank you. For the record, Attorney Brian McGrail, on behalf of M Bar, Bob Santinelli is here. And I think Tom Chwanda is here also, who Trudina, I'm sorry, who was our architect. To refresh the board's memory, we were here at the last meeting, and I can share the screen. This might be helpful. So certain components of this building are designated to be metal panels on the back of the building and at the top in this area as you go around down here also. And as you can see, they're specked up here. You blow this up a little bit. The spec up here is a Rhino Bond Bond North, provided by North Cloud Metal Composite Panel, the ACM series. And we are presented at the board that we were having a hard time getting this product, and we had talked about the possibility of substituting an EPIS material. The board was not too enthusiastic about that approach, so suggested that we we try to find this product. The good news is that Bob has been able to find an ACM substitute material. It's not made by Rhino Bond, provided by North Cloud, but it would be. Same material in the same colors that are specked on here. You know, the cost is pretty significant. It's about compared to the EPIS, it's about $80,000 more. So he would obviously rather to do the EPIS, but if the if the board's preference and requirement is going to be the metal panel, we're happy to comply. But it's going to have to be a different manufacturer. We just wanted to disclose that to the board, and my assumption would be, so long as it's it's looks exactly the same, the correct colors, that you wouldn't have a problem with that.
Any comments, board members?
No, we've 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 done substitutions before, and we normally want to see samples of the of what was originally approved versus what's being substituted. And I would suggest that happen earlier than later. Sometimes it's happened as far back as basically, or far ahead, as the sample panel basically on the site, so. I'd recommend that we at least get the samples ahead of time.
Okay. Anyone else?
What? Trying to unmute.
Can hear you.
And you?
Yeah, I can now. Sure. But not now, if you're talking. Now you're muted.
All right. How, what was the sample that was down at the at the? Department? That the original or the new one?
Bob, could you talk about the samples that you left off?
Yeah, I was just gonna, well, he was getting muted, just say it'd be a good. Point for Tom to make a comment because I don't know anything about these things, except that it's a metal composite panel. It's aluminum composite metal ACM. And the architect can speak better to that than I can. So, Tom, we gave him sample board. There were two pieces of ACM with it, along with the. With the stucco product, stove product. Is that basically, and maybe you could comment on that? Product that we left there versus any substitute ACM that we have. It's going to be the same color, same, basically, it's ACM. Right. Material, different manufacturers. Is that correct or?
Yes, this is Tom. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, the the samples that we left with the board were the original Rhino Bond product. The product that we since found is a Omega Light type product. It's called Omega Light. It's by laminators. It's an ACM. I believe it's the same product or very similar to the one that was used across the street, across Richardson Street, and we can definitely get you samples. I would say when we should be able to have samples before before we finish our foundation.
Thanks, Tom.
I mean, Jim, as far as I'm concerned, if it if it. If it's looks the same, and I don't care who manufactures it.
No, and and that's what we've done before, basically. So I I have no issue with it either. There are two, there are two sample colors on that board that were down there at the building department. And two sample colors basically on the synthetic stucco, so I assume that we're going to get two sample colors basically of the metalwork, basically, that we've already approved, just to compare.
Correct.
Right, if it's two separate manufacturers, that's fine, but I want to make sure that the products are the same. Texture, color, everything like that.
Yes, they're both they're both listed. They're both listed as ACM products, ACM panels.
Okay, yeah, I want to see them side by side if I can.
Have you guys used this and this product in the past or on other buildings?
Yes, I've used it on a project out in Worcester, and like I said, I believe it's the same product that was used across the street from across Richardson Street.
It's Bennett Street project.
All right, so you're estimating you could you could have samples by the time the foundation's on. What what is that timeframe?
Within the next two two weeks, I believe.
Okay.
I think you meet again in two weeks. Well, I don't know if you need it for the meeting, but I'll do my best to get it before that next meeting.
Our next meeting's November 17, so got a few weeks, but if if you if when you bring them down, Gail can alert us, and we can go look at them side by side, and perhaps at that meeting. We could have a quick quick discussion, maybe even take it up front to hit on the agenda, and just say, you know, if the board's good with it, then good to go. If there's any questions, we address them at that time. Sound reasonable?
Super, yes, absolutely.
Sounds great.
Everyone else good for now, until we get the samples and compare? Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate the update and look forward to seeing them.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Have a good night. The next item on the agenda, 21-16, 101 Cedar Street, I have a note in here that this hearing will be continued. So, Brian. I believe we're continuing that. Again, it's not a formal continuance. So there's no letter per se, but we're we're going to take this up at the next meeting.
Yeah, he's he's actually hired a professional architect to properly delineate everything as it should be to request a modification. So that architect is working on those plans.
Bravo.
Okay, so. That'll be on the list for November 17. Okay, so moving right along, the next item, 90, 19-40 to 19-44, 168 Albion Street, NRP Group, discussed temporary C of O. Or certificate of occupancy, for those who aren't familiar with the lingo.
Yeah, so thank you, Mr. Chair, Attorney Brian McGrail here on behalf of NRP. NRP is moving swiftly along on their project. They expect to. Their goal is to have final CEO with everything 100% completed by the end of December. That's how fast that they that they're they're moving along. What what they're, what we've done is we've had an opportunity to talk to the building inspector, Ben DiChristofaro. About the the possibility of getting a temporary certificate of occupancy from him for the first floor only, for the common areas and the units on the first floor. Ben is open to that idea. He's done it before on big projects like this. It will allow them to show the units with some models to prospective tenants and to have some of the early tenants who need homes get into the first floor. Ben is not committed to it because notwithstanding the zoning board, he needs to meet with us in in the fire department and in other departments to make sure that they're okay with the two, so. But Ben asked me to go before your board, just to make sure that you wouldn't have an issue with a temporary CEO. It's not binding in any way to the board from the requirement to complete the project. Will only be limited to the first floor. Client has moved along swiftly and in doing so, has not neglected any details to the extent that their lottery on these affordable units has already been advertised. They've had a session with the public information session. They have an application deadline coming up in November. For the lottery, their regulatory agreement has been approved by the state and recorded at the Registry of Deeds already for all the affordable units. They've made their I and I contribution to the town already for the approximately $90,000 in all of their infrastructure improvement to. For the mitigation of $30,000. So they're they're really moving along swift swiftly in this world would certainly help them out. So that's what we're we're really looking for the board to just send a note to to the building inspector saying for a temporary certificate of occupancy. That there are, that there are, you know, the board doesn't have an issue on that. The parking garage is completed internally. And, you know, one of the conditions of this that we would, we talked to Ben about, and, you know, the board perhaps could include it in their letter if they were so inclined to send it. Would be that the signage, the pedestrian signage for parking, et cetera, would be installed. Prior to certificate of occupancy, so the directional signs for where people are parked, where they get into the building, visitors, et cetera. Would be completed before any temporary certificate of occupancy was issued. The other thing we we would request tonight, we believe that they're going to be in a position to request final CL with everything completed, including landscaping, before the end of the year. And we were hoping, similar to what the board did at 69 Foundry Street, if you would consider. Appointing two members, in that case, it was a board member Wall and McBane to to view the property, what we deem that it's complete, to be able to tell. The building inspector that everything is completed on the project with a checklist, because a lot of people are going to be looking to move in at that time, at the beginning of the year. And we're concerned with the with with the holidays and the limited board meeting in December, that we would would really have a gap that could be. Problematic, and that's the way it was handled handled at 69 Foundry Street. So that's our second request, except for the TCO.
Right, I have a question. When it says temporary C of O, what, is it temporary because it's just part of the building, or what does temporary mean?
Temporary means it's on a limited basis. It could either, it could be anywhere from 30 to 90 days, depending on the building inspector. On what he wanted to do, but it's it's not a final certificate of occupancy. So if he wasn't happy, he could he could order the building vacated. It's it the it's kind of like the temporary certificate of occupancy is not permanent for that floor. It's temporary, so the building inspector, when is it, when it expires, would not have to renew it. He could renew it or extend it, I should say. But if he if he revokes that permit, he could order the building vacated. In all tenants, anyone going in is going to, you know, it will be disclosed to them, is based on the temporary certificate of occupancy at that point in time. But we're very confident that we're going to be in a position to get that final by the end of the year. The goal, the set date on the goal for that is December 28, to to have our final certificate of occupancy before before the new year.
Amy, the fire department's going to have to pass on this, and the building department's going to have to pass to make sure means of egress are all in place and all. All the lighting and everything else is necessary for egress as well. So there's a there's a bit of a bit of a higher bar when it comes to public safety on that side.
Yeah, we've talked to the fire, they're going to, you're right, Mr. McBane, they're going to have to sign, every department is going to have to sign off on this temporary certificate of occupancy. And the fire department will require that life safety be completed throughout the built, throughout the entire building. They'll require that.
Yeah, temporary, that just scares me because you think of, you know, if something happens, I don't know what would happen, but they're going to kick people out type thing.
Well, people are going to know, and, you know, again, we're so close. I mean, we're 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 like, you know, we're confident that we're going to have it 100% completed by by the end of the year.
Okay. Looks like 60 days from now, basically.
Yeah, I mean, that's the goal. The goal is to have final CEO by December 28, and that's why we're requesting that two members be appointed to to work with us, two inspections on behalf of the entire board, going through all of your checklist, because it will be done.
So is the landscape really, at this point, complete?
It's it's about, all of the hardscape is done, Jim. You know, I've got Matt Trider's on here, and I I wanted him on in case a couple of questions like this came up. Matt, could you? Could you explain to the board, really, while with the landscaping, if you would?
Tom Nod is also on on the call.
Oh, great. Thank you, guys. Well, Tom can address it, whoever's whoever's appropriate.
Yeah, I'll let Tom get into the details, but the majority of the landscaping is more hardscape than plantings. There's there's pavers in the courtyard and the sidewalk and the brickwork on the front. We do have some planting beds and some plantings in the courtyard and out front, but we have the pavers ongoing and the the base for the for the pavers, but Tom is on, and he's there on a day-to-day basis and. Pretty articulate guy, so I'll let him address it.
Tom, could you give a little detail of the landscaping? Yeah. Yeah, so we we got it really, the landscaping is a three-part thing, because we have the Maple Street lot, which is. Getting binder course next Wednesday. We'll have top coat done by Friday, and then we're striping the following Monday, which will right around the eighth, the the first week in November. That's that part. We have landscaping that goes, you know, in between the sidewalk down Foundry, which will all be complete at that time. Down Foundry on the garage side and the building side, we have plantings that will be complete. We're in the process of getting the sidewalks, the curbing all reset, nice and straight, pouring the sidewalks. That's all happening within the next two weeks, and we'll have all the the trees that are scheduled to be planted in those areas planted. The landscape architects already began tag and everything for us, so the courtyard is the third part of it, and the courtyard is about 75% complete. And like Matt and Brian said previously, it's, we got pavers and an equipment area, which is the south side of the courtyard. As you work your way to the north, which is Albion Street, we got a good portion of the hardscape, the 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 concrete, we have a concrete. Pad that's poured all the way down to about halfway to through the building, which we pick up pavers again, which are getting delivered next week to begin that portion of it. So we're 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 making great headway. Back back to the plantings themselves, though, we have loam in all the beds, and again, we're just waiting for. A good portion that we can we can go pick up, bring and start getting in the ground. The the goal is to get everything in before before we start getting into cold weather, obviously.
Is, what's the status of the street lighting?
The street lighting stays as is on Foundry. We have new lighting that goes in the Maple Street lot, and we have new lighting that goes in the courtyard, and the light pole bases are getting set tomorrow, actually.
I thought they, are those lights that are on on Foundry, are they the Main Street type of lighting?
Yeah, yep, those are all in in my discussions with with Wakefield Municipal Gas and Light, Dave Paulson. Though all those lights were already changed out not too long ago. That's why with they're staying the same.
Okay, so so then the next question I have is. The garage basically had some work to be done in it, both in striping and repairs. Are are the all those permitted out at this point?
Yes, sir. Yep, all the striping's been done. They're going to restripe it. The tenant over at 1, at 178, which is Taurus Management, they did all the work inside there. They're going to be restriping it come in another two weeks here before it's set. They had, we we had walked it with them. We came up with a punch list. All the the majority of the stuff is done. They got some, you know, my, some stuff they got to take care of, but striping and curb stops, tire stops, rather, everything's in. We just got to get signage in place.
Were there some lighting changes as well, as I remember?
Yeah, they did. They changed all the lights out. They got all new lights on the inside.
All right, so a little more background, a little more background on that. They came in and striped already. They restriped it already. We walked it. And noticed some areas that needed a little more attention, so they're going to come back and touch it up. So, you know, some some of the striping is needed to be addressed.
They're, yeah, they're going to restripe the entire garage.
And and the other lot, basically, what is it, Lake, I guess it is?
Maple. Maple.
Okay, so that has the handicap spots spots in it, doesn't it, or for van?
That's where our drop handicap handicap drop off and loading zone is. So we'll have, that will all be striped out, and we'll have the ADA accessible route. From the drop off and pickup zone across the street, across Maple and into the Foundry sidewalks and into the building.
What's the story with building signage?
That's all showing up on November 8.
Okay.
The other thing that they're doing, just as as an, you know, a point of interest that, as you know, they they did a lot of staging on Foundry Street, and then and they replaced the water main. From Albion all the way past their building, and the in Bill Renault inspected and, you know, said, you know, gee, now that all this work is done, it would be nice to repave the street. Because that wasn't a requirement, because of significant work. And the other project, the crystal lumber is going to repave. So NRP has agreed to make a contribution to the town to repave that portion of of. Not just repave it, but but grind it in all new pavement that will go on Foundry Street. That that's going to happen in the spring because it's too late in the year. Bill Bill Renault actually didn't want to do it in the fall. He wanted some of the where the water main went. And some of the utility connections to have the winter to maybe sink a little bit and adjust, so. So we're going to be blending that with, or actually, we're actually just going to write a contribution to the town to do all that work. For the town to do it in the spring.
This this temporary occupancy is only for one floor?
That's correct.
And we're just looking for the board to to tell the building inspector, if you're inclined, that, you know, the board's not saying to issue with them, because Ben has not committed to issue with. Ben has said, you know, I've got to look into this. I've got to talk to fire. I got to make sure I'm comfortable with my components, but, you know, I just want to hear from the board that they they don't have an issue with it.
And in the lobby.
If I decide.
And the lobby's going to be complete.
Correct.
All right, so that way the receiving area for people basically coming and going, but also for for sales as well.
Yes.
All of the lobbies on both Foundry Street. All of the lobbies on both Foundry Street, the Albion Street entrance and Maple Street will be completed within the next week.
Okay, thank you.
So Brian, real, uh, real quick, if you're, uh, thirty to sixty days out, how come you wanna get the temp C O?
Cause we got people that, we got people that are gonna wanna, wanna occupy, um, by mid-November show. And so that's like forty-five days beyond, you know, before we're gonna have fin, ask for final C O, I'll be ready for it. And to be able to bring prospective tenants into the model units that are completed. So that, you know, it's just people can actually see where, you know, what, what the unit would be that they would rent on the upper levels.
All right, um, how's the, uh, prospects look? Uh, does it look fifty percent rented or eighty percent or?
Status. Mark, do you wanna address that question on, uh, what those are going?
Sure, sure. Thanks, Night March Favor, guys. Nice to see you again. Um, yeah, so what we are, would like to start leasing activities, which is the reason for the T C O. We don't have any firm, uh, contracts for leases, uh, yet. Uh, so we're working on that and of course, there's people that are interested. It's just a matter of pinning down these dates and we don't wanna promise anything that. Uh, we can't achieve so that we have to then house people, uh, because we can't actually put them in unit. So it's really to begin leasing activities and the goal is to be placing people in units by middle of November.
All right, Mark, thanks. Uh, do you have any firm rentals on the first floor as of now, or?
We don't have any final signed rentals, uh, as of today.
That's it.
Okay. Any other comments, board members, on, again, the T C L one? Imagine there'll be an update later, um, as they get closer to the final, but, uh, in the, in the final walkthrough and so forth. But in terms of temporary C O and, uh, us at least issuing a letter to the building inspector saying. From our perspective, we're okay with proceeding at his discretion. Okay, hearing none, I'm okay with it.
Sorry, I was, sorry, I was trying to shut off mute. Um, so if we do it temporary. It would be similar to when Jim and I went before, we could still look at it and walk through it with, um, fire. And see, and then we could sign off on it, or I'm trying to remember how it worked last time, Jim.
We, 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 I get an echo here. Um, we basically, uh, walked through at the ti, at the time, they weren't going for a temporary and they were going for a final. And the time we were basically, we were holding several units, if you remember, basically. But it was a walkthrough by all the departments at that time, including ourselves with the fire, um, basically. Um, lieutenant and well, walking through there. Um, and we'll discuss that in a minute as far as the completion of that project, but staying on this one here. Um, we certainly can have the opportunity if we want to, and I think we should walk through this eventually before the final is issued. But for the temporary, basically, it's gonna be pretty much up, as I already indicated, it's up to Ben, whether he wants to issue it. We, Brian's just looking to see whether we have any issues, um, at this point, before, that we wanna make a point to Ben about.
Yeah, the board at this point is certainly not certifying anything as far as the completion of the project. You're just saying you have no problem with temporary occupancy. That's why I've also asked for two board members to be designated, Amy, you know, probably in. Probably mid-December to, to do that visit to the building with a, you know, to, to determine that it's completed. Or if it's not completed, to give us a punch list that's gonna satisfy, uh, those two members that it will be completed and then come back again. And then it will be correspondence from those two members to the building inspector saying, on behalf of the board, it's complete. They've done everything.
But frankly, I think I almost like this process better. It seems to give us even more teeth. You know, it, not only will they not get a C O if they don't, you know. Finish the punch list, but they'd have the reputational damage of having to kick people out if Ben revokes the temporary, so I don't see any problem.
Okay. All right, Brian, sounds like the board's okay. You and I can work offline and get that letter drafted in the next day or so. That would be fine. Okay, so did you not need a, uh, you don't think you need to vote for this, Mr. Chair? And it's up to you. Um, yeah, I know, that's probably in order. Um, no, good point, I know.
So I can make a motion. I move that we allow the chair to work offline with, uh, to. State are okay with the, with Ben issuing a temporary occupancy if he wants. And assigning Amy and. Jim does it, designate needs, cause you guys started, you guys were, uh, on it from the beginning, weren't you, the working group?
Uh, not on this one, I don't think.
Who was?
No, I think we, I know we.
I, I think you were, actually.
Uh, uh, you know, my mind gets foggy with age.
Yeah, I will go back to my motion and keep it Amy and Jim. Designates to walk through, uh, for the final. And if they'd like me to join them. Uh, for the, uh, landscaping portion, I'd be happy to. I'd love to see the building.
Okay.
Because the other thing we wanna do is we wanna make sure like sprinklers work, then lawn sprinklers. I don't really care about the building ones.
Okay.
Second.
Amy seconded that motion. Thank you, Chip. Any discussion on the motion? All right, Chip?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay.
Thank you.
Um, okay, thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
So Brian, well, I mean, uh, Dave, while we're on, while we're on the street, can we bring up, um, and Brian's here? Can we bring up sixty-nine?
Yep, I had that next, even though, uh, yep, I was gonna, uh, suggest it, but, uh, please go ahead. So this is, um. A request to discuss sixty-nine Foundry Street, the building next door.
Is Kipo still waiting?
We're gonna come back, we're gonna come back.
Oh, okay, sorry.
We're gonna come back.
So, so, um.
This is the last one, yeah, yeah, go ahead, Jim.
I met, I mentioned to Brian the other day, asked him what the story was with sixty-nine. And, um, and I'll let Brian talk about what the status is up there, but according to him. Is that all the plantings are in and all the striping and everything else, it wasn't in way back, Amy and I walked the building is now all done. So to my way of thinking, before the snow buries everything, um, we ought to go down there and check it all out and make sure it's. So we can sign off on that particular aspect of it. So when they finally do a C, the full C of O, they say at least they'll have our approval in place.
So.
So Brian, if you, Brian, if you wanna talk about the status.
So just to refresh the board's memory, um, we entered an agreement with the board. Uh, as far as to get a certificate, a, a final certificate of occupancy, uh, on this project back in March. But the board, um, held back five units. I worked on that agreement with the chair and with, uh, board member McIntosh and town council. And we subsequently designated five units. It's all been recorded at the registry of deeds. So you guys are holding five units, uh, five C Os on this, on this building. And this is the, this is the attachment to that document that specified everything that needed to be done. And, you know, I can go through it quickly. The vinyl fence on the west, uh, property line, uh, my client informs me is completed. Vinyl rail southwest corner has been completed. The Foundry Street overhead utility lines and poles, all of the electric is now underground. The poles are there. The only reason is, is one Verizon line on them and they're working with Verizon to get it down and put it in their conduit. Um, they've already fully paid Verizon for their work. And when Verizon has done the light department, cause those are the light department poles, where we moved the poles. They've already paid the municipal light department in full for that work, too. So that's why we had, had it by others, but it's, it's close and all the electric is already operating underground. The concrete sidewalk between the entrances is complete. Parking area top coat is complete. Parking space striping and signage is done and, and, you know, obviously this needs to be looked at by Jim and Amy, cause it designated on this. Landscape and hardscape, um, at grade and then the courtyard is a hundred percent complete. Lake Street storm drain, this is not done, um, because we're having, um, we're, we're working through some issues. The Conservation Commission to be able to do that work and the town engineer. Um, so that is kinda tabled. Um, the markings on, um, Albion Street, if the board might recall, this project had a, uh, a condition on it that. It's required to provide markings out on Albion Street and Foundry, that intersection, the do not block pa- painting. So when people are coming out of Foundry Street and there's like a train or a red light that they don't block that. So folks that wanna take a left-hand turn can go. Um, that has not been done because as you know, there's so much construction going on and utility connections out to, out into Albion Street. So that, that hasn't been done. So, so far you've got the drain and the, um, in the pavement. Um, the courtyard going down to the building, the courtyard rail system is completed, broken glass replacement is done. Exterior painting is completed. So really, the only two issues are, are this. And Jim, thanks for bringing this up because absolutely now is the time to go out and inspect all of this. Uh, to confirm that the representations that my client made to me that I'm passing along to you are accurate. Uh, and it has been, and if not, what has to be done. Um, so that's where we are. Um, what, what, what I would request of the board is that, um, that, um, assuming. Assuming that, uh, Jim and Amy say things are, everything is complete as I've represented, uh, through my client. Um, and if it's not, that then they subsequently do it. But once Jim and Amy confirm that, that, um. That the chair and, uh, board member McIntosh be able to work with us to bond these infrastructure work items. To the satisfaction of them on an amount and town council. Uh, and once that's done, that the board would au- authorize the chair to release the restriction on these five units. So that they can be sold. So that's where we are. I mean, I think it's good news that it's all done, um, but it's just a matter of kinda closing this out at this point.
Brian, how far are you from closing it out with the con con?
Um, they raised issues on how we're gonna, you know, whether we need to do another filing, Chip, to, to, to go into the, uh. Culvert where this, where this pipe is gonna connect. The improvement involved making, uh, taking an eight-inch pipe in, in. Um, um, Lake Street and, uh, making it a twelve inch and then it connects into the culvert. And, and they're saying that there's some jurisdiction issues that we, we thought were all part of the original order of conditions and included. And there's some, some discrepancies and discussions on that at this point. So, you know, I, I, I think, you know, I don't know how close we are. We've, you know, we've gotta work it out. So it certainly has to be bonded because I, I don't think it's gonna be like done in the next couple of weeks or something, Chip.
Okay, so we're looking at the spring.
Probably, yeah, probably at this point, yep.
And then for the markings out on Albion Street, how much of that is controlled by. Our visiting group and what totally happens down in that area?
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, that's kind of, you know, my thought is that, that item might come, get to a point. That we might come back to the board and say, instead of doing that work, we suggest we make a financial contribution.
I was thinking, why don't you do that now?
We could, you know, we actually talked to my client about that.
One, one open issue.
At the end of the day, I kinda think that these markings are probably gonna be required at that intersection, no matter what happens. Because if you think about it, it really makes sense to block that off, to say, hey, if you're waiting for the train or waiting for the light. Uh, don't pull in front of, front of Foundry Street, stay back five feet to let that street flow out for people that wanna go, take a left and go towards Stoner.
Right, but that whole, that whole marking and that whole intersection, you know, who knows when that's gonna. When we put our final stamp on that. With a number for markings. I, I don't think it's a huge number, five, ten grand, something like that. Uh, cause it's really just painting that you're contributing to. And then that could, I think there are others making contributions to that intersection as well.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, my client's open to that, so I actually talked to them about that today.
Because if you're bond, if you're bonded, I mean, you, you guys could be here two years later doing that work.
That's right.
And they wanna be gone by then, I'm assuming.
Yeah, so I, I would request that Greg and the chair be able to work with, you know. With us and town council and the town engineer to, to figure out what a fair figure is on that, um, and, and, and potentially.
As well as the bonding for the Lake Street.
That's right, yeah, you know, I, we're comfortable working with those board members and, and I'm sure the town engineer will provide an estimate of what that work is worth.
Brian, could you also think about the same thing? Did you say the storm grain is in Lake Street? So it'd really be town and then just get it all, or is it on your property?
And then it's in Lake Street, Greg.
So could we think about the same thing for that, too, then? Instead of, again, they're owners, they wanna be out of there essentially.
We would be open to that. I don't know if the town engineer's gonna go for that.
Okay, okay.
Cause, cause it.
He probably wants them to do that work.
No, understood, but again, if it's gonna be, if they're still, you know.
Greg, you know.
Whatever form it takes, that's easiest.
Yeah, and I would be, you know, very receptive to the board giving Greg and the chair authority to work that out too with the town engineer. If they, if that, if, if they deem on behalf of the board and the town engineer and town council agree, that's a better way to go about it. Yeah, my client would probably love to be able to do that, to, to, to pay an amount and be done instead, you know. But I, I'm inclined to think the town engineer might not agree to that, but I'm very open to it.
It all depends on whether he's planning on doing other work in Lake Street.
So that's it. So, so Jim, thank you for, you know, kinda waking us up on this because you're right, that these inspections need to happen like now with good weather. And, you know, and also, you know, we'd like to get these five units released now that, you know, assuming all this work has been done. With the bonds, what, or cash payments.
All right, so is the next step that inspection and then we, then we follow up and?
I, I would request a vote to, you know, basically, um, to, you know, authorize the chair, um, working with Greg. To, well, first to, to have Amy and, uh, Jim inspect to confirm that all, to, once they confirm. To Greg into, to you, Mr. Chair, that, uh, everything is done except for the items. Then it would be, um, your, you know, you would be designated to work with us to either bond those two remaining items. Or come up with an agreeable payment to the town in, in substitution. Uh, and once all of that is done, then the chair will be authorized to sign a release of these five lots, uh, five units. I just think it's simpler that way, instead of trying to come back on busy agendas, I think. If the board's inclined to do that. Okay. Board members, you're okay with it? Yep, go ahead.
So I move, Mr. Chairman, that we recommend or approve. And allow Amy and Jim to inspect the site, uh, for the completion of the items as presented to us this evening. And upon that inspection and, uh. Notification to you that the items are complete or simultaneously for you and Greg. To work with town council and, um, the applicant. To come up with either a bond and or payment to the town for the last two items that will not be completed before the finish of the. Project. And then given that all those things are in place and appropriately, and the four of you say, yep, we're all set. Then that we allow you also to, uh, recommend the release of the last five units. Without coming back to us.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on that motion? All right, all in favor, Chip?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I vote yes, okay. That's how we will proceed.
Great, thank you. And I'll get in touch with the.
Great, thank you. And I'll get in touch with Amy and Jim about, uh, find the time, guys, that, uh, works to walk the site.
Okay.
Start it that way. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair and Board Members.
Brian, how occupied is that project? Just out of curiosity?
Uh, it's pretty much full, Chip.
Is it really?
Yeah. Yeah, I think there might, I, is, you know, because my client has been on me, you know, on these five units and he's got, uh, people that want to get in. So these are the last available.
Full, other than those five units, I presume.
Yeah, yeah. I, I gotta go.
We've had that before.
Okay. All right, thanks, Brian. Um.
Thank you.
All right. All right. So now we, that was the last one on the agenda. Now we will circle back to one seventeen Water Street, Kipos Roast Beef. Bob, you back with us?
I am. Yes.
Okay, so.
What's up here now, um?
So I'm having a problem with my display right now. I think my, my laptop is just not happy, but if I, I, I didn't, um. Make somebody, somebody else a co-host, so. I, I just don't have the benefit of the screen, so I'm gonna rely on you and the other board members. To let me know what you can see, but if you can bring up the plans and then just talk through what, uh, the tenant would like to do. I've got the file in.
I'm now, I'm. I apologize for this here. I'm, I'm trying to find. I, I go into the share screen, but we. I'm not sure where I find, I put this on the desktop. Of the, of the.
But you gotta open it. Did you open the file, whatever you're gonna show?
It's.
Can't find it.
I can't, when I go into share screen, I can't find that file.
But have you opened the file on, from your desktop?
And then do it like that, okay, I got you now.
It should open in Adobe, it should open in whatever format it is. Once it's open.
Okay, I get it. It's, this is, yeah, I'm sorry, this is just, uh. This method here, doing it here is the first time I've done the, um. This here, but I'll get it right here in a second. It's gonna get the desktop up. All right, found the file. Let me, uh. It's opening up.
Dave, I wonder if I sign off and then come back on and try to claim host.
You can try, Amy. I, I just.
Let me see. Let me make sure I have the right login first. Okay, man, I'll be right back.
We were able to open the file, Bob?
I, I have the file open now, um.
Now, if you select share.
I can see you now, okay, and I'm trying to get back into, uh. The screen part to. Okay, now I get that there. Share the screen. Here we go. Okay. There I am. Can you see that?
Break it.
What was that?
Shrink it. Hit the negative button up above. No, not there. Just, just to the right of Wake, Kipos Wake, Wakefield. No, go the other direction.
This one, any channel?
No, no, down, under confirmed. Okay, now, now it's over next to.
Yeah.
There it is, right next to your cursor.
Hit the negative. No, too high. Under confirmed.
Under conf- oh. This one here, I'm sorry.
There you go.
All right.
Keep on hitting it. Again.
Wait till I get a hold of John after he, but he put me through here. Okay.
Hit it again, it's still too big.
We can't see the whole thing.
There we go, keep going.
Not there, stop.
Okay.
Now remember how to do this next time, will ya?
Oh my gosh.
Welcome to twenty twenty-one. Okay, so if you have it on the screen again, I can't see it, but if everyone else can, please proceed, uh, please take us through what that. Client's looking to do.
The, uh, there's an existing. Projecting sign there as well as a, uh, fixed awning. That's in the illuminated awning. And, uh, they're looking to change the faces. In, in the projecting sign and then re-skin the awning frame itself. Uh, nothing will change in any sizes at all. But it's definitely a change in color and in graphic design. Uh, to some degree. On there, yeah, there's lettering, of course, on, on the awning. And, um. It's pretty much in a nutshell, there's nothing changing in size at all, but. It's just a graphic change, a color change. Pictures here, the, uh. You see, that's one of the existing vi- views there, side. Showing the projecting sign and then the, uh. Front view. So this is, this is what he explained to me they wanted to do on this.
Are they the same size as what's already there?
Yes, everything, nothing's changing in size at all. You know, the, the projecting sign, we're just, the new faces going into the existing frame. And on the fabric, uh, on the, going on to the steel, steel frame of the awning. It's just recovering at same size again.
Oh. So here's, here's the issue. Um, one is the culmination of all the signage. Is within compliance. And this is not the overlay district. Um, this is signage code. The, the original signage code. The total amount of signage basically is compliant with what's allowed by the frontage on the street. That's not a problem. The problem becomes is that both of these signs are what it called basically occupancy signs. There's no such thing as a projecting bracket sign. There's nothing, there's, uh, there is some mention of awnings basically. Um, and in both cases here, what's before us, we have no idea what the lettering size is. Now, I, I might note that as far as the projecting one. Projecting slash occupancy sign. Um, with Kipos roast beef and like, um, there's no stipulation as to size of lettering. Within the code. There is a stipulation on the awning basically, that it can't be greater than three inches. But we don't know that. In fact, it looks like it's probably more like nine, given the dimension is twelve on this thing. Um. Also, there are some existing signs, um, that already exist on the building. The question is whether the board wants to deal with them. Um, given that this was. This was brought up in two thousand twelve. The total signage basically being discussed at the time that they expanded the operation within the building. So does the board want to deal with? Other items that are not compliant currently. Uh, with this code. But have been up there for a while. Um. Let's see, um. There are several other items here.
But, but Jim, let me just ask, if, if we're. Right, if there, if it's the old sign bylaw.
Yep.
And you're replacing like with like. You can do that, can't you?
What like?
The awning. It's the same awning, different color, same letter size.
Oh, I'm not, no, I'm not, I'm not saying anything about the awning. What I'm saying is the lettering.
Right, but the lettering is already existing.
Yes, but you're changing it, therefore you've got to be compliant.
But are you? The same words. It's the same awning, it's the same size.
You're still changing the design, you're changing the color. You're changing the overall design. There was a paragraph to that. See if I can find it.
Yeah, I, I thought if they were. Same exact size and everything else, that was allowed.
Yeah, just like a replacement if it's broken.
Correct.
Ma- maintained by, shall not, um, maintained, uh, continued use. And maintain, but shall not enlarge, reduce, redesign, basically. Or alter in any way unless conforming to the provisions of contained herein. So. In, even in the overlay district. If they, if they, it was exact copy. Same color and everything. Absolutely. Say it was ripped, it had to be replaced, absolutely.
But because they're changing color.
They're changing the design. So therefore they've got to come in compliance.
Has to come in compliance with them.
Or we give them a variance.
The compliance, compliance basically, in this particular case, is the lettering height. Like I said, Kipos, the projecting bracket sign. They can have an internal lit one, they can have a new plastic face. They can, there's nothing stipulating what the lettering size has to be. So that as it stands is fine. The total signage, if I was to look at it right now. As what I'm assuming it is, far as lettering and like, taking, taking that whole fringe basically and saying it's twelve inches of signage. It's compliant. Compliant in the total signage allowed. Not in the lettering size.
So we'd need to bear, we'd need to give them a variance for the letter size.
Yes, but we don't know what that variance is because they haven't given us a letter size unless we want to dictate a letter size.
Or we could say that it fits, or it fits in as depicted in the twelve inches.
I, yeah, or just tell them it's gonna be nine inches or something like that, or.
But we don't know.
Or match the same as the existing height.
Uh, we could do that if you want.
Cause they, they're claiming just a different font.
Um, I don't even know that that, they're claiming a different font, basically.
I thought I just heard Bob say that.
Uh, no, I didn't say anything about font, no. Um. Was, I just said different colors, I said, and. In the design was a little different, but not font, um.
So the size of the letters the same as the existing?
Uh, I, I honestly myself do not know, he did not give me. Information. I would, I would, by looking at it, what I'm seeing, it seems to be, but I would have to get that confirmed. I apologize for not having that there, but. I'm ju- I'm trying to represent him the best I can right now with this.
Yeah, I get it. And you can't regret what you don't know.
Yeah, there, there are other areas basically which are pre-existing to this. Um. That aren't being changed and they're not asking to change them at this point, but they're not in compliance. Somehow or other they got up and they're in place. And probably well beyond ten years.
Yeah.
Bob, on the current sign, um, awning, is the overhang like that twelve inches as well, do you know?
When you say overhang, you mean the balance that?
Yes.
Yeah, it's. I imagine it is, I mean, what, what dimensions that he's showing on that drawing are certainly the existing sign frame of the awning frame.
Okay, cause that's all staying the same, all the steel staying there.
It's just, yeah, the, the only thing, if there's any. Yeah. Yeah, color and. And deviation of the graphics to some degree, I guess, but, uh. What it is exactly, I can't tell.
So, Chip, I'm just thinking, what you were talking about, just say. Same size lettering, right?
As existing.
Yeah. Cause it'll fit, if it's the same thing, it's gonna fit.
Correct, correct, or, or the lettering has to stay within that twelve, I mean.
Right, it's not gonna go over it.
Picked it, it stays in that twelve inches. Which I think Bob said, you know, it's probably around nine, and I think Jim said it's probably around nine and. It probably is, cause that gives you an inch and a half top and bottom.
Right.
My opinion is that it would look just as good if there's even shorter letter. That would be read from across the street without any problem.
Do we know that this is the color versus one I have on a printout, which is more green? So is it a blue or is it a green? This is.
The print you gave me, it's, it's, uh, it does call this coolly bright white blue. That's, that's the, uh, fabric material.
Okay.
Who is the brand name?
Anyways, that's the, uh, those, that's the only issue I could come up with short of. Um, some grandfathered items.
Just looking at the existing sign, I'm just looking at an image right now. And it's on the same brackets and the same foundation.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's what they're representing.
I mean, it looks like one and a half inches from the top and one and a half inches from the bottom, it's the same size. It's off, so it's midians, but.
They, they're just popping the, popping the plastic and putting a new plastic lens on it.
Yeah. I mean.
As well as just putting a new canvas on the, on the building. On the stationary awning.
Yeah. Are, are you doing with the, does that mean you're changing the, um. The, uh, bracket sign up top too? My, did I miss that?
That is the bracket sign.
No, no, the, um, the rectangular Kipos sign, uh, is the lower rope, right part of the screen. Is that gonna be blue as well?
Faces, yeah, the faces change in that. But the, nothing structural to the sign. Uh, size or any other modifications to it.
So Dave, are they just coming back because we have jurisdiction still on signage?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
If you remember way back in two thousand twelve. Falvey and I had a long conversation. I don't know whether it's a conversation or an argument. But it was in two thousand twelve.
And it left an impression on you, obviously.
I can't, I can't remember yesterday.
Yeah. All right, so with the signs, we would want, because it, it doesn't show it on here. We would want to ensure that on the awning, the letters. Are the same height as existing or no more than nine inches or both? Is that right?
That would be my feel.
Okay, but otherwise, again, I'm just going by the plan because I can't see the screen. But the size of the awning is, is gonna fit over the existing frame, so it is. The same size, it's just the lettering. And then on the bracket sign.
It's fine.
As is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and a color issue, right? Different color, right?
Color is noted right there.
Well, different than it was before, basically.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's a replacement.
As presented, the coolly bright light blue.
Right. I'm just looking at the plan and just the height of the letters aren't there, but the su- the dimensions of the. The awning and the sign are noted, just not the. And what was it about font or anything? I mean, is there some, something we would need to note in terms of?
No.
Cause Bob, where this is potentially going here proceeds to, to a vote, to prove this is. Um, I would be offering a letter. Supporting the changes noted this plan with these stipulations. Um, and then when you get your sign permit, you know, that. That would be on record with the building inspector, right? It's part of the file. All right, anything else, Board Members, on this? All right, so. Alright, so.
So I make a motion, I make a motion that we grant Dave permission to write a note. Uh, accepting these sign revisions as documented. Would the, would the uh, condition that on the awning, the letters are the same size as existing. And or no greater than nine inches.
Sign plan by John Connor is dated, it looks like Bob, eight, 27, 19. This plan is actually a couple of years old.
It appears that way, prior to COVID.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, Chip?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yeah.
And I vote yeah, okay. So Bob, we'll get that written up in the next day or two. Get it, get it into um. Building inspector and. And your client, you or John can proceed. Okay.
Yes.
Alright.
I look forward to my next time here.
Alright, and you will be so much more informed of.
Yes. Yeah.
And text.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, have a good night, Bob. Alright, that's the end of the agenda. Anything, any other topics that were not previously uh, considered for the agenda? Now we'll move on to any clerk of board comments?
None from here.
Not me either.
And we have.
I believe there were some minutes, some, um, some amendments to the minutes, right?
From September 22nd.
Right.
And, and then we have the October 13th ones to approve, yes.
So. Are we approving the, I move that we approve the October 13 minutes as written?
Second.
You, any discussion? All in favor, Chip?
Yep.
Amy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Tom? Yep. Greg?
Yes.
Mickey?
Yes.
And I vote yes, okay.
I move that we accept the September 22nd minutes as amended.
Second.
You? Any discussion on that? Same um, board members, Chip?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Tom? Yep, Greg?
Yes.
And Mickey?
Yes.
And I vote yes, okay. I think we've reached the end of the agenda for the evening. Uh, we will welcome that. Get ready for November.
We are gonna pay for this lit, this early evening next time.
Oh, this is, this is, this is a makeup for the last several, but anyway, with that motion to adjourn is always in order.
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Uh, any discussion on the motion? So Chip, all in favor?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
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 Greg?
Yes.
I am in favor, okay. Thank you, appreciate the time tonight, board members. This meeting is now adjourned. Have a good night and we will talk to you soon.